All right, good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Public Board Forum on the Charter School Policy Revisions. The way that it's going to work this evening is Ms. Alvarez is going to present to us, and then we will invite, as a board forum, members of the community to join us and share with us their ideas, their impressions, and needs, suggestions. And I'm going to ask the board to simply, we'll just listen, as has been our habit during forums. And then, as with the other forums, we'll hold you to three minutes. If you want more, another three minutes, you can come around, circle around at the end of the list. Currently, we have a very, very short list, so it should be not even getting up and leaving your chair necessarily. And then, at the end, if we finish with public input, prior to 8:30, we'll have a chance for the board members to have some dialogue amongst themselves, knowing that we have a hard stop by 8:30. Okay? So with that said, good evening, everyone, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Alvarez.
Good evening, everybody. Board of Commissioners and Dr. Santa Lisa, I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. I also want to acknowledge my staff that is seated over to the left. So Trevor Roberts, who's a specialist on my staff, and Lindsay Anderson. They both have been working to assess with the development of this policy. So I want to make sure I acknowledge a lot of their hard work is reflected in some of the thinking here, and then when we get to an actual policy. Yep, sure. And when we get to an actual policy, it reflects their efforts, so I want to make sure I acknowledge them at the start. Just for like members in the public and the board, just to remind everyone that, you know, Baltimore City Schools has 70% of the charter schools in the state. So we take authorizing and approving charter schools very serious. They've been an important partner that allows us to simultaneously work at providing different options to students that may not be available in our traditional setting, as well as offering quality to students. Since 2010, this city has opened 13 charter schools. Just so you, so for comparison purposes, the county with the next highest number of charters in the state is PG County. And so they have 12 charters. So we're very serious about authorizing schools. And of those 13 schools, there are a mix of school types. So you've seen anything from replications, which means opening the same kind of programming in another part of town, like BIA West will be having a west location in the upcoming school year, as well as conversions of neighborhood schools, and then brand-new concept ideas. And so you can see the blue are replications, the green schools are conversions, the purple schools are new concepts. So you can see there's been a mix of those types throughout that period of time and throughout, if you look at our portfolio of schools. The vast majority of them are new concepts. So Charter Policy IHB and IHB RA were adopted in 2011. The policy hasn't really been updated since 2012. The state law changed in 2015 and '17, and so we want to make sure that we're reflective of changes of the law and the policy. So when I get deeper into the presentation, we'll talk about things first that are just based on making sure that we're cognizant of the law and that we're including that in our policy. The other thing, there's other things that we want to consider changing because we think it makes sense to look at that. So items that we're going to talk about are, do you change the terms to have longer terms for successful operators? Are we giving waivers for things that are essential to what it means to be a charter school? Looking at how we talk about renewal and remand and being cognizant of the equity policy, the timing of when this policy will go to first reader in the summer, in July, with second reader later in August, allows us to actually reflect and be deliberate in reflecting the equity policy within this policy. So that's a benefit of the timing of this. So the first part that I think we need to reflect on is where we see the need to really think about how do we incorporate equity or in the policy standards that start off the policy. And so the standards and the rationale behind the board's vision for charters are included in these policy standards from when they were adopted. So this is a good time to revisit to see if those, if that vision and those standards still reflect the board's current thinking, as well as how do we ensure, again, it's cognizant with having an equity lens? So some of the key highlights to the standards are, you know, our reason for authorizing charters are to provide high-quality learning opportunities for students. Charters by their nature need to be highly autonomous and also highly accountable and centers of innovation. In exchange for that autonomy and flexibility, these schools get higher levels of accountability that that's tied, that's the nature of charter, which is different than traditional schools with that renewal process, that they're a part of our reforms, that they're supposed to be helping us to accelerate improvement in student achievement and excellence, and that we're working in partnership towards that vision and mission that's around accelerating the gains and public achievement and accountability for all students. So those are sort of like the frames there. And I don't know if I should pause here, or how you guys want to.
I think it's okay if you just run through what you need to, then we'll hear from the public, and then we can pull you back if we have other questions.
All right, perfect. So one of the things-
That is unless you need a break. If you need a break-
No, no, no.
Just make it to that one, like, "I'm going to cough really long."
So, so one of the things that we, we've had a few conversations or retreats, see, to land around this, one of the things that we thought about is, do we include an opening frame that has equity become a lens through how we're looking at how we're authorizing schools? So that's something that we can think about. I think, too, that the equity focus should be around looking at how we're increasing quality of education for students, but also how we're looking at organizations that we're authorizing, are they reflective of our city in terms of the people who are running those organizations? And then, again, making real connections between the two. So now I'm going to get into the part that's about changes that are reflected, to reflect the law. So one of the big changes in the law is, previously, the law said that charter schools had, with the exception of conversions, which are neighborhood schools that converted to charter, had to be open to all students on a citywide basis. So new ideas, newly created schools could not have a zone or designation. You had to be a conversion school in order to have a specific geographic area that you wanted to serve or preference. So the law now allows schools to apply to the board for geographic attendance areas of up to 35%. And so that's to make sure there's still citywide access for the majority of students, but it allows schools to give some preference to the communities that they're serving in order to make sure that schools are not trying to set up overly resource or neighborhoods that have a lot of resources and try to pick student populations that have a wealth of resources. The law also puts in that geographic attendance area must be equal to the median income for the city or lesser than in the area that is selected. So that's one of the protections that's in the law. We do have two schools who have geographic attendance areas currently, because that's allowable under law, and so they've asked for that waiver, that's Creative City and Baltimore Montessori. But we just want to make sure our policy is reflective of that as well. It also, the law also allows charter schools to give greater weight by, through preference, to students who fit other categories. So the current law allows charters to give preference to students who are siblings of students who attend the school, students who are children of founders, and founders are defined by the people who were the original parents that established that school or part of that founding board that's in their application. So that's a set list, or children of staff. This would allow charters to apply to the board to be able to give preference to students with disabilities, students with limited English proficiency, or homeless students as part of the preference groups. The law now also allows schools that are, what you can call sister schools, there are schools that are related, to give preference. So let's say I operate a K-8 school and a high school. The law allows the operator applied to the board to be able to give preference to its lower school to access into that higher school program. Again, that's capped up to 35%, so it's still reserving space for citywide attendance. And it's clear that it has to be, it can't be, I have two K-8 programs, it has to be part of a multi-grade system of schools. Excuse me. The other changes is that the law now clarifies some requirements for what schools can qualify for conversion, and makes it clear that conversion schools can maintain their zone for the neighborhood that they're serving. In order to become a conversion, the school must be identified as a low-performing school by the board, have above-the-district population for students who have economic disadvantage. The law defines it as free and reduced lunch, but we define it as economic disadvantage in our district, or who meet a, and who meet a strategic need for the district. So now I'm going to talk about other changes that we would like to make that are not about updating for the law. So we, you know, charter law in the state of Maryland was established in 2003, with our first schools opening in 2005. But before we had charter law, we had schools that came in as new school initiatives. They were the first operator type, and that started in the '90s. And so some of, most of our original charters, or maybe all of our original charters, were actually new school initiatives that converted to charter when we had a charter law. And so they've been around a long time. Many of them have consistently gotten five-year renewals through our renewal process, which I think is pretty vigorous. And so we're at a point where we're saying to this board, should we be considering giving longer contract terms to schools who have consistently demonstrated excellence by getting five-year renewals and having those highly effective, and factors in the categories and the criteria that we should consider for that? The other thing that we want the board to consider is, you know, we've had conditional renewals in recent time, and sometimes they've been a year, sometimes they've been three years, of actually setting the minimum for a conditional at three years to allow us to have, not just a look at practice, but data to support whether or not that that practice is changing for students. Finally, there are some automatic waivers that are embedded in the charter policy for schools that are kind of like essential things that you need, that's part of being a charter. Many of them refer to board roles, so the board, as you know, has been doing a process to change roles into policy. So we want to make sure that if they refer to a role that's not now a policy, that we're updating it to reflect to a policy, and to consider, are there other things that we should be including as automatic because you need it as a charter? So the enrollment piece is just a change that has to do with it, the change from being a role, referring to a role, to referring to a policy. Procurement is not something that's named as an automatic waiver, but really, you know, most of our schools get procurement waivers. It's sort of essential to being able to do business outside of the vendors that are approved by our board, that the school operating board approves it. There's certain things that are set up in state law that are protection, so they're still subject to, you know, the 25,000 cap and having to go through a process for that, as well as meeting, I'm sorry, planking on the women, the minority women business, yeah, component. So those things are, state law still prevails, but because of, there's state law so heavily prescribed, there's not really a lot of flexibility in how they set up their procurement policy. So rather than having schools send a procurement policy, and then we edit it to make it consistent with state law, that we just say, "You have this, and this is the, this is the process that you have to use for that." Same thing with school activity funds. So many charters account for that differently than traditional schools. So traditional schools account for it through sending information into finance. For charter schools, when they do their audit, they account for it in how they do their auditing practices, so making sure they were cognizant of that. And then family and community engagement, we require traditional schools, and right now, it pretty much is all schools that have a school family council, but in practice, for charter schools, because they have a different structure, we should be allowing them to have that structure in our policy, that making that really clear. We allow that in practice, but it should be codified in policy. But they just need to meet the spirit so that there is real community and family input into the budget and all those processes. And our schools do comply with that, so. Finally, the policy, and these are things that we use in practice, when there are concerns with schools, we will use certain sanctions for concerns. Some of them could be routine from not having turned in, like, your budget, so you might get a notice concerning about that if you're late on your budget with how you cure it. It's not defined in policy, so we wanted to make sure that the sanctions that we use are actually defined and explain how they're used within the policy. So notice concerns are used for kind of more routine concerns related to not meeting a key contractual obligation or a law or a board policy. Notices of reprimand are used for things that are either repeated concerns or things that haven't been cured or are more serious and would merit a notice of concern. So that has some sort of adverse impact to students or to the district in meeting its obligations or something, and that kind of thing. A notice of probation, action plan of, for something that's extremely serious, it has a major impact on the viability of the school, could be something that would lead to like a revocation if it's not resolved. And so operator under that would be required to submit a plan to address those. And then the last one is a notice of revocation, and that's issued if we're going to be getting a process, a legal process around revocation, so that notice of probation with an action plan would happen before, because it's giving them that period of time to cure. We've, want to make sure that the language in a renewal process, that the policy, how it describes a renewal process, is consistent for how it works in practice. So an example of that is the policy lists four areas that we look in renewal, and what it does is it separates financial management and governance from compliance with state laws, regulations, and such. But those are really governance, so we want to make that more clear, right? Because you, like, complying, that's about governance, whether or not you're able to comply or meet those kinds of requirements. And also make sure the standards are really clear about what it takes to renew, what qualifies for non-renewal, and make sure it's really clear the differences between a non-renewal, which happens at the end of your contract term, and a revocation, which is a mid-contract closure. So making sure those are really clearly outlined, there are different processes, they have different requirements when a school's going through that. The other thing is, we've, you know, this year have had remands back from the state board related to decisions this board has made, and so we want to make sure that we actually define a process for how that works and what that looks like in policy and reg, and then more, in a more detailed guidance or implementation plan for that. One of the things that's come up around how to handle the remand is defining the advisory board's role and what we do in a remand. So the advisory board, you know, makes a recommendation, their advisory to the CEO, and they make recommendations to the CEO on what to do for charters. And so in the remand process that we've used, we've used basically like a legal process, that it goes back to the highest place that it was, you don't send it back to the beginning of the process. So the question is, should we continue kind of mirroring how legal processes work standardly, or should it actually just go back to the advisory board to get new advice for the CEO? And, or should there be conditions around when you give that advice? Would you only consider it if the advisory board's recommendation was different than what the board decided? Or would you do it, you know, what are their circumstances? So those are the things that we're considering. Lastly, we did some work about a year and a half ago with the advisory board to more define their role and that, and how that body works. We've added membership to beef up the advisory board to be more reflective, and so we want to codify some of that within the policy, within the regulation and in the policy. The regulation in particular defines the advisory board in specific ways, so we want to update that to reflect the work we've done with the advisory board to more clearly identify their role and their responsibilities. Some of those key changes to that is adding more kinds of groups around the nonprofit organizations that solve, that serve in the advisory board capacity, so that is really looking at a variety of sectors, defining how many members sit on the advisory board, defining terms, which are renewable but having some sort of term period for members of the advisory board, having a co-chair structure for the advisory board that would include a member of the community or groups, co-chairing the organization, and clarifying like their roles and responsibilities, and then also really having a strong statement around ethics and the avoidance of conflicts of interest around the advisory board within the policy. And this is just a list of the current member organizations on the advisory board, so there's a lot of different organizations that serve, so you have ABLE, you have KC, you have City Council, Baltimore Community Foundation, Teachers Union, Catholic Charities, Child First, Greater Baltimore Urban League, Elevate, Live Baltimore, the Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, Shared Support of Maryland, Y of Maryland, and then we have, what's not on here is staff that sit on the advisory board, so the CAO, the Chief Accountability Officer, and O and I. And this is more specific language on the conflict of interest. So because the advisory board has such a crucial role in advising the CEO, that could lead to recommendations for this board and ultimate decisions, we want to make sure there was a strong stance on that, because the community's entrusting this body to give good advice to the CEO, to really reflect the best interests of students in their advice. And so it's important that there's impartiality and independent judgment in that body, just as it's important that this body has that. So we wanted to make sure there was a statement, a strong statement around that, and that people were avoiding participating in the advisory board and simultaneously advising applicants or people going through processes, that there was a really clear delineation of that. And then the last slide is just kind of the dates, so I'm going to just kind of stop here. So we have done some meetings with different groups already, and we'll continue to do so. So we've met with the advisory board twice, we've had two sessions with operators, we've met with PCAB, and we're meeting with other groups in the future, and we're here, and I'm going to stop for them.
All right, thank you very, very much. So what we'll do now, because it is the Public Board Forum, so it's our chance to hear from the community, is we'll start with our pre-signed-up speakers and listen to you for three minutes, and then we'll open it to the gallery, since there's only a couple signed up, and see if anyone else wants to. And then Ms. Alvarez will probably pull you back up for some questions. All right. All right, so with that, Ms. Goodwin, would you like to join us?
This will be very brief. I've read a couple of the policies, and it seems to be quite different from the initial intent of charter schools. And so I've been reading a piece called Restoring Shanker's Vision for Charter Schools, and I came upon a piece that is constantly repeated. And so in the article, it says, "A Scott D. Person of the United States Department of Education Charter School Program noted in 2010, in 2010, while one of the promises of charter schools was that they were going to be a source of innovation and be a benefit to not only the children attending chartering schools, but for all public schools. In practice, the collaboration is not as widespread as we would hope. Originally viewed as isolated laboratories of innovation, charter schools came to be seen by many as a replacement for traditional public schools, and charter school expansion is a solution itself." And that is exactly what I'm seeing here in Baltimore City. I'm seeing that instead of us saying, "Oh, city neighbors is doing well with their communication piece and their grading by using Jupiter, let's expand it to our traditional schools," is a constant resistance. Also, they're using project-based learning, so if it's working for them, and they also use project-based for their examinations, they're called POL. While aren't we using that across the board, it is apparent that our students prefer that type of learning, and they prefer those type of assessments. Also, when I look at the budget, I realize that even if it's not intentional, there are chilling effects that we are creating a two-tier system. I cannot think of a charter school that doesn't want to lose its charter and be funded the way that traditional schools are being funded. If they were truly equal, charter schools wouldn't feel that way. So it is apparent that charter schools have more autonomy, they have more funding. However, the collaboration of teacher voice that was supposed to be there is mostly from the administration, and I can't say that is for in all charter schools, but it is happening across the board. That is not the original intent of a charter school. It was to give teachers more voice, and it was to also give students an opportunity to do different things, and if it worked, to have that expand to traditional schools. I do not see that, instead of it expanding to traditional schools, I see this district just saying, "Oh, this charter school is doing well, let's put another one on the other side of the city."
Thank you very much. Would you, would you like another three minutes?
No, I'll wait if someone else wants to talk.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So then I'll open up to the gallery, because you are actually the only person who pre-signed up. If there's anyone else here that would like to join us, come on up, and would you please say and spell your name for the record so that we have it on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Sims. I'm the Acting Director of the Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, and I just wanted to briefly state that we do support the recommendation or the, the language that is potentially being proposed about having high-quality charter schools that have had numerous renewals, successful renewals, or have a strong track record. We do support having those charter schools have an eight-to-10-year renewal period, which is, there are other states and jurisdictions across the country that do do that, so we certainly support that. And we also feel that the one-year renewal, which has been a renewal, we do support having the three-year. The one-year just does not give a school an opportunity to do any kind of turnaround, the data's not there, and it's really a death knell to the families as well. So we do support actually moving to the minimum being a three-year. So that was really all I had to say, and obviously, we're great supporters of public education, that's why we're here. And if you have any questions, and at any time, the Maryland Alliance or myself can be a resource to you, we would be glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it S-I-M-M?
S-I-M-M-S.
Perfect, thank you so very much. Is there anyone else that would like to share their thoughts with us tonight? All right, Ms. Goodwin, would you like to come back? Here we go. Okay, perfect. So then we'll open it up to the board if you have questions or statements. Uh so then we'll open it up to the board if you have questions or statements you'd like to make so that Ms. Alvarez has those, Dr. Ask can hear them, or questions that she might be able to answer. Commissioner Richardson?
So I I have actually spoken to Ms. Alvarez about this before, but I do want to stress my desire to use the application process as a way to support our portfolio. So um less about um accepting new ideas, which I think new ideas are great. But as much as we can really take an inventory of the schools we have and the needs that we have and find a way to support charter applications that are kind of helping us to fill those those voids that we have within our existing portfolio, I would be in support of that. So I just wanted to say that again.
Thank you. Commissioner Chinia?
Thank you. Um two two uh areas for me that I just wanted to to ask about. I know as we've been looking at, and I and I would agree with the conditional um renewals that that one year really is not enough in terms of a school really doing any kind of turnaround. But the other concern um is still that a school um a school that continuously has three-year renewals. And I know that's one that we've talked about before versus having the full renewal. So if if we're gonna be thinking in terms of the possibility of extending schools that are outstanding for five years to eight, I think we also need to have some consideration about the number of times that a school might do this sort of conditional, I don't know what the three-year would be called, okay? So that's the first one. The second one, um in um in looking at, and perhaps it's not the full makeup of the advisory board, but in what you were saying in terms of of reflecting all of the different populations, maybe I maybe I missed it, but I didn't see all reflected. So are there additional folks that aren't listed on the advisory board that specifically?
No, so what I was saying is like, as we move forward, we're revising the policy and looking at how we make changes to that. I think that's one of the things that we need to do. We did do work to like try to have more of a cross-section of organizations on the advisory board, but I think we can look at that in a deeper way, consistent with how we're looking at other body, other parts of the work.
Okay, and I'm specifically thinking like things like, you know, with the immigrant prop, you know, with the number, okay.
Yeah, we did, I I will say, we did um try to get um um organizations that work with immigrant populations um and other populations to join the advisory board. But we're not uh successful at that time. I think that's something we just need to continue to do outreach and maybe broaden our list of who we're reaching out to, so.
Okay. Uh but there is a perception, even even though as I as I'm reading the, you know, as you go through the policy, the um there's a desire that um and in fact, you you mentioned the waivers for taking students with different kinds of needs, but there's a perception that those children actually are not in charter. So to the extent that the advisory board might reflect some of those populations, I think it would be great. And then the last one had to do with um the um around the, what was it called, the remand?
Mm-hmm.
And this is just my own view. I mean, be- because of the the i- it's the timing is so um precise with with some of that, when if if we get something back. Um I'm just wondering if having it go back to the advisory board, which has already taken a great deal of time to look at an application and make a recommendation that's come to the board, um what impact that might have to have to to loop all the way back to the advisory board? That's just for me. I just, I feel like um, you know, the board has, the board has the advantage of having that recommendation. I mean, I'm sorry, the CEO has the advantage of having that recommendation and um that might really slow down that process. Hopefully, we won't have that many, but it would slow, it seems like it would slow it down to me uh to go back again. So those were, those were my areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for the information. It's very helpful. Do have a few questions to support what Commissioner Richardson was saying about our portfolio. Outside of uh the conversion of the charters, are we able to specify what our needs are for charters?
Yeah, yeah, yes, we can. We can set priorities for that. We can add that to the application and we absolutely can.
Okay, that's that's good to know. Um with the geographical attendance, the income requirement, is that for? Is that for the charter application? That's for the charter application? So if a group is applying for the charter, do they have to adhere to that income requirement?
So the geographic attendance area is at the request of a school, so it doesn't apply to all charters.
Just that particular school?
So yeah, so if an if an applicant wants to serve a particular community and give them preference in their lottery, so they would include that waiver request in their application. Additionally, schools can ask for waiver requests um twice a year um per their contract. So they could ask later to um ha- add that waiver.
Perhaps in the event that the income, the median income changes in the community that could ask for waivers also, that what happens if the income changes for a community?
I think it's something we have to monitor like at routine points, like when we go through renewal. It's really new, so we're still thinking about that, but I think it's something that we just have to look at. And because the schools also have to take steps to maintain that ratio of whatever the board approves as their number. So if we look at the ratio and you have more students in that population where it's limiting the citywide, then you might not be able to give that preference for the upcoming lottery to the ratio. So people would have to just go through in a citywide. So you may still get applicants through that, but setting a separate preference, we just have to monitor that so that there's still citywide access.
Thanks. Is there a way for us to define in in the policy? This is a, me being the po- a po- you know, is there a way for us to define explicitly what happens once a charter is not renewed? So what happens to um the students, what happens to staff, teachers? Is that and is that something that we could put in policy?
It's in the um policy and the regulation, the process for that. You don't wanna, we can look at that language, but we don't want to get too specific when we get to implementation because you don't want to have something that becomes uh impractical. But there's a, there's a lot in there about what we have to do.
In the regulation.
In the regulation.
Okay.
Yeah.
In in the policy that exists now, um it is, what is it?
I H B.
No, 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 letter K within the policy.
Oh, yes, K is where vacations discussed.
And it is number six. Do we have a, do we, we currently, and I'm assuming that we do, do we already have a way of monitoring, I guess this will come out in the audits, monitoring the resources that are purchased um with city schools' funds? Do we have that? How do we account for the resources that are purchased with city schools' funds? In the event that a charter is uh not renewed or it it it's revoked, how do we monitor the materials that we purchase and how do we get them back?
Yeah, so um if a school's going through the closure process, um we actually have like a detailed process around that. So we do an inventory of the items in the school. We go through a process with the operator where they uh provide a list of items they believe they bought with their fund. So if it's bought with public funds or bought on the behalf, it's like they got a grant that was for students, then those materials belong to the students. So our by our policy, when we close a school, whether it's a charter or a traditional school, we look at where large populations of those students are going as their next school. And those are just where we send the materials, that they follow, the materials themselves follow the students to support them in their next um school. But we do a process where they have to turn in tax information, um receipts, evidence uh and evidence of source, uh source of funds for items that they're claiming belong to the operator and not to the students. And so we do that process through legal and so um they do like a review of those documents to determine whether or not we agree uh those belong to you or or not, there's not enough evidence.
Thanks. And then finally, it uh uh goes along with what Commissioner Chinia uh was referencing with the advisory board. I didn't see any uh student um representation in that list. So would it be appropriate, and this is, I'm asking the question, would it be appropriate to have the voice or perspective of a student on that advisory board? Perhaps in the way that our student commissioner is, you know, they can't, they can be a part of the conversation, but they may not be able to uh weigh in on specific items? Is, would that be appropriate for the the advisory board?
Uh I think that's something we need to think through. Um I think it makes sense to have student voice. I I think student voice is important. The challenge is a practical challenge in terms of when we're meeting and the availability of students. And um some of the um throughout different points of the year, some of the things that we discuss with the advisory board that they advise the CEO on are sensitive in nature. So like how to handle um serious situations. So it's interesting, so we've got to figure out how you do that. I think you're right that we need to figure out how we're including students, but there's some challenges with that.
Thank you.
Um an idea for that would be to look at an emeritus member of the Student Associated Congress that chooses to go to college or pursue their after-high school locally, so that that they're, you know, that first year out, so they're still fresh in that. And also to build on Commissioner McFadden's piece, uh considering representation from PTA, CCAC, or PCAB as well.
PCAB is on there. I think we accidentally left it on.
Okay, it showed that you presented to both of those groups, but not that they were on the advisory.
They sit on the advisory board. Joseph Kane is on PCAB.
Or I missed it.
So we'll, we'll double-check that.
Okay. Um also a question off of the line of questioning that Commissioner McFadden brought up, as far as as what happens with funding? A, in the regulations, should we expect to see a funding formula for how how charters will be funded to begin with? Or is that more of an operational piece that doesn't go in regulations?
Yeah, so it's, that's not in the policy or the regulation.
Okay, perfect. Um what about things like oversight of Title I and Specialized, both servicing and funding to ensure that Title I dollars that go to schools are spent in service of Title I students?
Yeah, so that's like, that's covering through the grant itself. So it's already kind of heavily regulated. Our OAA team and our grants team worked to ensure that students are, I mean, not students, that schools are spending it appropriately. We note it if they're not, like there's actions like notice of concern and um different steps that we take when schools are not um handling their Title I funds appropriately. So.
But we tend to codify a lot of those other things in policy for other areas.
I think we might be getting too weedy. Like we, I don't think we have a policy, a traditional schools' policy that gets into Title I, I think. And it, you know, it's so subject to the administration and, you know, so I don't know, you know, I don't know if the funding.
It was just a question for consideration.
Yeah.
Um another one is, is it possible for the board at some point, and I know that there's a few of us that have asked along the way, to actually see the rubric and the charter advisory board uses and to codify that so that four, five years in advance, you know, if if someone's considering proposing a charter, they can see the rubric and they can know its policy, so this is the same rubric that they'll be evaluated on so they don't?
So you, we we send that to the the board? So you guys have the every rubric that we, everything that we use in any process you have?
But as a, as a solidified document that's not gonna change weights?
We change, so we do, we change it, we change um the renewal rubric uh on an annual basis. We go through a whole debriefing process with schools at the conclusion of renewal to be consistent with changes in the state and also to be cognizant of of what they need. Like, for example, we've had to change it because of the tests. We went from changing from MSA, Park, now we have another assessment. And so it's a living document um uh to allow that flexibility, um to be adaptive to the needs of the district and to be cognizant of changes that the state is making. But we do that in public, we do that with operators, with the advisory board, with you. Well, we'll be before you soon.
Yeah, no, I I was thinking more along the lines of like a section on the rubric that'll say, based on growth or based on grade for renewal specifically, you know, based on growth, based on on um student achievement. And those numbers and those assessments may change, but how much is school climate? How much is grades? How much is growth? Those things should probably stay fairly consistent, should they not?
So there are aspects in the policy that get into what the board considers, right? And so we can look at that. One thing I would caution about saying the weight for growth, for example, should always be this specific weight. It is like, for example, when we transitioned away from MSA to Park, we had a period of time where we had outdated MSA data and not a new assessment. And the only way to decrease the weight for that outdated data or the only way to um have it have less. I don't want to say weight, weight, but it it's lessen the impact of that because it's older data, like we need to consider it because it's relevant to the school, but it shouldn't have the same weight as if it was new data or uh consistent uninterrupted. And so the only way to do that is through changing the weights. So if you take away your ability to change the weights, then you don't have the ability to adapt to those changes. And fortunately, I feel like we've been changing state assessments.
It's completely understandable, but the buckets should be fairly, we know we're gonna look at this, we know we're gonna look at that.
Yes.
And the 100% of weight is gonna come from a balance of these with no more than X percentage coming from from, um I'm losing the word, two, when you just look at achievement by itself. Anyway. So so anyway, I think that that, spelling that out really clearly, so people at least know the buckets.
Yes.
Um is is really an important piece. I would echo Commissioner Chinia's piece on the maximum number of three-year terms. And then also to Ms. Sims' point and others, if we're gonna look at it at an eight, and I actually think it should be a ten-year renewal, part of that renewal application process in asking for a ten-year is how will you disseminate your learning? And how will you have impact on the commu- the schools near you geographically or the like similar schools across the city or professional development? Some sort of give back um from from the additional learning that happens. And and then the other, the other piece is when we look at the portfolio, and I believe this was Commissioner Richardson, talking about what the district needs and priorities are, just a statement that those priorities will be, the portfolio priorities will be reviewed every three years at the board annual meeting or retreat so that it aligns with the strategic plan at the time and any emergent needs, as well as best practices as they as they shift and change. Commissioner Richardson?
And this is less of a question and just more of an observation that I've had this year. I don't know if we can go back to your slide five. But um I feel like we are, this year especially, we spent a tremendous amount of time on charters in terms of renewal and during the application process, things are coming back to us. And um I don't know how to word this, I'm just gonna say it and it's probably gonna come out wrong, so hopefully you can help me. But if there, is there a way to begin, just for us to know, how much time are we spending? And especially if we look at renewal situations? How much time is district staff spending? And I had us come back to this slide because this slide talks about, in exchange for this autonomy and flexibility, public charter schools accept higher levels of individual school accountability. There's like a sense that you've become a charter, you kind of know some stuff that we want our families to have access to. So we're giving you leadway to do these things. Now we're at a point of renewal. And I feel like our district's staff spends a great amount of time providing guidance to charter operators, providing information and just time and evaluation and things like that. And at some point, we got to figure out, right, is it too much time we're spending? Like, at what point do we need to just part ways? Because this is not improving, right? And but I And but I, I can't really make that determination without knowing, well, how much time is our district staff having to spend on charters who are in this renewal process and are requiring a lot from the staff that really wasn't the intent and the spirit behind putting charters in place in the first, in the first place. So I don't know. Maybe my, my fellow commissioners can help me here, but that's how I feel.
Or figuring out a way if, if we ended up moving to a menu of services and doing, just as many of the charters have asked, just give us all our money and let us buy back what we want. What do we have to charge for that? You know.
So I just want to make sure, oh, sorry.
So the only piece that, so one, I actually think, from my standpoint, I think it's a great question for the board to ask. I'll just add a little footnote that in term, you could just track Angela for a year and get a lot of kind of response to that question. I think it also um connects to some of Ms. Goodwin's comments about what I think she rightly pointed out is a challenge around the spreading of best practices, which I would agree with her, is actually one of the intents, and I, I don't think that there's any disagreement about that, but the comparison of time spent, right, on that work. And as somebody who, and while in Boston, it wasn't charters the way they're set up in Maryland, they were in district pilots. Like, it, it was, we spent more time, it was still a struggle for us, but I have to tell you, since coming here, I am still stunned at the amount of time. There is no way I would have spent that much time on some of the processes um that we spent. I think the, the challenge is, as always, that, that we're going to have to wrestle through, what, what that section that you just referenced meant. That, that second bullet, what does that actually mean? And it has meant in implementation, as is appropriate and as I think is expected, different things for different schools at different times of just my decade in Baltimore City. And so wrestling with and having conversations about that, I think is important because there was a time when, you know, I mean, let me put it this way. There are varying, when, when you have a high-performing charter, the question's so much easier. You spend so much less time, right? You haggle over things. But if it's generally a high-performing charter, you're not running over there to worry about special education qualifications, right? Like, are you meeting Comar? You're not worried about Title I implementation because you, you have a high-performing school. I would situate some of the question in, to what extent, like, what is the definition of highly autonomous and highly accountable, right? And, and that is something that I think with real-world examples, the board's going to have to struggle with as we struggle with implementation. You know, I tend to be, I, 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 I tend to try to not be overly paternalistic, either in the raising of my children or in the oversight of schools. I'm like, if that's something you decide to do and you trip up, hey, you, you wanted, you wanted full reign on that. And but how you define that, the, the demarcation of that versus support is not an easy distinction to make, right? So is it, I'm now in trouble legally on something and so now it's a, district didn't support me? As opposed to, no, we assumed, you came to open a school, having been somebody who has opened schools in my career, we assume you know that, right? And, and I don't think that that is an easy space or a clear space to navigate. And people have a point of view, right? And, and, and we talk about that. That the second piece is around the buyback and we're in the process of working through, right, charter formula and things. I, I just want folks to know, as somebody who has looked at systems, who even for traditional schools have gone to buyback, right? Be it school systems in Canada or, or even when I was in Boston and we used pilot school buybacks to drive what then became traditional school buybacks. The level of infrastructure that is required from, from a public and, and frankly, schools who already assume they don't need central office until something goes wrong, then everybody's calling, right? The amount of infrastructure to set up that buyback, to charge back. And like I said, I was in Boston and we had a, had a small controlled set of what the buyback was. But even then, right, that, that has to be worked through. And what does the tracking system need to look like and what is the infrastructure? And given, and I want to thank the Baltimore Sun for it, I don't thank them for much, you know, all the time, but I want to thank them, that in one of their recent editorials about funding, right, the new corrected data about our central office puts us equal to the smallest central office of any district in the state. So what then is the commensurate infrastructure to support that? So I, I, so I don't think there are easy answers and just because I have a point of view, I don't think that has to be the point of view. But I, I did want to draw attention to, like, that's, that's the kind of discussion that, that we need to have. And having sat in at least two positions within this district, I will tell you, it, it varies based on the point of view of how that's perceived, right? There, there were schools that as CAO, I got calls that were in trouble on certain kinds of requirements they were required to have. And, you know, again, my viewpoint as CAO at the time was, that's not on me, that's on you, you're autonomous, right? But because of the ethos and the approach, I ran in and if I had, as somebody who has spent time in the private sector, if I had clocked the hours of my staff in doing cleanup, right? It, it would have been a serious chunk of change had it been at my consult, my previous consulting, right, when I worked in private industry. Flip side of that is, I think the rub from charters is the right one, and that is, if there are services we are not using or don't find effective, right? Then what is the recourse we have? Because in some ways, and there's a part of me, I know it's surprising, that is a market-driven person, if there is a service that people do not want, right, or don't find effective, the market actually drives a very clear opinion about the effectiveness of the service that you're providing. And that is valuable feedback, whether it's coming from charter schools or traditional schools. But I would just say, having tackled this question in various environments and contexts, I, I just think that the, you know, the board rightly in this kind of discussion is going to have to wrestle with some of those other issues. It's not just as simple as declaring when you're in implementation. Because the reality is, somebody can say they don't need a service, thank you, it doesn't work for me. And does that department go away if there's not, right, commensurate funding for it? But the other side is, if you don't want the service and then you end up needing the service because your house is on fire, do, does that mean I let you burn? Okay, so, so, but, but that, but that's why, but that's why I'm surfacing the question.
Right.
Right? Because when you want the cash, it's easy to say, thank you, I don't need it.
Right.
When the, when the building is burning, then we go to the narrative of, they're all our children. So you can't conveniently select one narrative
Right.
and then reject another. It has to be, how do we come together and struggle? And I don't think there are easy answers. Because, yeah, when the school calls, I, yeah, I, I don't want anybody's kids feeling, but I also, because the kind of mama I am, I'm like, you said you didn't need this, you didn't want to pay for it. You have feds coming down, you have state coming down. Hey, so wh- when are we going to be accountable and when are we not? And for high-performing charters, that is, just like high-performing traditional schools, it, it's, it's a much easier lift. You don't spend as much time on that stuff. It's when people struggle a little bit. That, that's what makes it challenging.
Commissioner Chinia?
I just want to say thank you for saying that and, and in agreement. But, and I also think that a piece of that, and I do think we need to have a, a lot of discussion, especially around the one about the accountability piece. Because I think that's where we spent most of our time this year. And, and the, the, the piece that was concerning for me was, um there really is, it's not just the operator who had some issues with what accountability meant. But then the message was going out to parents so that there wasn't a clear understanding of what it meant. And if we're saying that we're holding school, a school a higher level of accountability, then to come in and say that, well, we score just like all the schools around us, that's not a valid kind of an answer to give. So I do think we need to have that kind of conversation, and if it, if we, if there's a way of even uh charting that for folks going out to say, this is what it means in the academic piece, this is what it mean, then, you know, that needs to happen and it needs to be understood by the full school community.
So one of my challenges um to Commissioner Richardson's point about time spent is this board does spend a lot of time talking about charters. And yet we say we value charters and traditionals on, on a similar, similar plane. Um but if you just did a minute tracking of our discourse, there would be an inequity. So I think one of the big, heavy lift decisions facing this board is, are we going to continue to be a system of schools or are we going to be a school system? And what kind of uniformity do we expect between schools? And in that case, do we want to also look at a application for autonomy of a, of a traditional school? You know, it, it certainly is, to your point, i- it's, it's beyond staff capacity at this point and, and would need a whole heavy lift of support. But if we have a highly successful, competent high school, could they apply for a different level of support and decision-making and maintain traditional status? Um so that our portfolio is, is really robust and we can focus then our district efforts on those schools to ensure that kids that, that are highly mobile are having a similar experience from school to school, that teachers are all, are all competent and prepared, that administrators have community and solidarity. Um so some of those other questions I think are going to face this board in, in the next months as we dig deeper in this conversation as well. Uh anything else? Um that, you know, as long as you understand that's not the norm and, and if it was a contentious thing, I'd have to say absolutely not. Uh but yeah, come on up. No, you might as well, we're here. It's that delicate dance between being welcoming and really wanting community input and then managing it so that if there were eight hundred people here, how we don't then change protocol, so trying to be consistent there.
I'll be quick. Um my name is Erica Brockman, I'm the executive director and founder of Southwest Baltimore Charter School. And I just wanted to raise a couple of questions more than answers. Um the first one is about innovation. I think that that point that you raised about that sentence about innovation, I think there are different ways to get innovation. One is that charters who are being innovative and successful support non-charter schools. One is that you open more charters, and one is that maybe you convert traditionals to a more charter-like status. So I just think that that, that idea of innovation and spreading the wealth of charters can be implemented in a, in a bunch of different ways. Um and so I'm curious, not, not for you to answer it now, but when you really think about innovation and spreading the wealth, I think that my sense is that there are many people who are opposed to opening more charter schools as a way of, of re- reforming the school system, and I think that is a viable option, is that you just have more schools that are charters. You also can do those other two things that I mentioned, so that's just kind of a, I wonder what innovation really means when you're, when you're trying to do education reform through um a charter lens. The other one is, I just caution the board to not let the three-year renewal become kind of a catch-all. So the three-year renewal happens sometimes when you are just barely able to stay open. You're like this close to closing. And the three-year renewal can happen when you just miss the five-year renewal for one indicator. And those are really different kinds of schools. That's a really different set of scenarios. The school that's barely staying open and gets a three-year and the school that's really doing really well except for, you know, one or two data points. Um so I think that then, using the three-year renewal as a conditional, I think that has potential, and I think there's something there. I just caution us all to think about the three-year time period as meaning all these different things. And so having been through multiple three-year renewals myself, um and feeling like I just missed a five-year, which maybe, you know, Angela would disagree with, but to me, it felt like we were just so close to a five-year. Um the amount of work that goes into doing a three-year renewal, you know, we just got renewed and now we're planning again for another renewal. You're just in this constant cycle of renewal, and that makes it hard to do any of the best practice sharing that you're talking about. It makes it hard to, you know, frankly, it takes a lot of time to go through this process, and so that detracts from what you're trying to do as a school. Um so I just, I just urge you to be careful that the three-year renewal, um the district has told us again and again, three-year renewal is like solid, it's like, you're doing okay, it's a good job. It's like getting an effective on a, on a teacher evaluation, it's like getting a good C, C-plus, B-minus. Um and that may, that may be true on paper, but it feels really crappy for a school. And um, and it takes so much of the district's time, to your point, it's so much time to bring the school. So that's my point, my point is just that.
Could you spell your last name for us, Erica?
B-R-O-C-K-M-A-N.
Thank you, just, just, we do our transcripts.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Why not? Bring you back up one time. And, and while Keisha's on her way back up, um I'd just like to holler out a big shout of, of thanks and gratitude to our tech team who got that three-minute thing back up and are rolling with this non-traditional meeting. So appreciate everybody in the back room.
I guess a thought that I'm having is the loophole, again, of statements being made that can cause the district to expand more charters and start to replace traditional schools. I hope that it's not the focus of this district and that this remained, this district remains a school of, of diverse um, this district remains a district of, with diversity, uh diverse schools. And I also wanted to say that a three-year renewal can be challenging because when they come up, they're already in their first year, so you actually only have two after that year. And so I, I do agree with the extending to three to maybe five, however, I disagree with the eight to ten. Where's the accountability in between there to see if they're really doing the job that they said that they would do? And that's too long of a time span from eight to ten years, that's two generations of children going through with no accountability. And if they get eight to ten years, I would like to know, how long do you look at the traditional schools that you close? How, how much time do you give them before you decide to close them? Do they get additional eight to ten years? And so, yes, I would like the commonality, to see what is the commonality between traditional schools and charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think if we look at the last two um guests back to back, the beautiful thing is that everyone is invested in the best thing for our kids. And that even if we disagree on how to get there or the process along the way, the fact that we all want to end up at the same place is a really powerful tool. Um so I hope as things get contentious along the way, we lean into that um and continue to ask Commissioner McFadden's question, how are, how are the children doing? Um and if we keep that at our forefront, hopefully we will get this as close to right as possible. Um but it's a live document, so then we can always go back and buff again. So to Ms. Alvarez and her office, thank you very much as well, uh to people who came out on this Wednesday night, appreciate that. And we will officially adjourn at seven fifty PM. Thank you.